Good evening, welcome. Pam, will you please call some other?
It's 5:31 PM and the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees is now in session.
Pam, we have a quorum. Ms. Robles, myself, Judge Hagerty, Ms. Nahada, and Dr. Graham are present. Mr. Uxser and Ms. Solis are unable to attend. Item one point...oh. Dr. Pandy, would you mind leading us in a pledge? Thank you, Dr. Pandy. The computer not working?
Yeah, they're not working.
No? Okay. See where's that? Doctor, hit on if we had that new software, we wouldn't be going through this. Item 1.4, approval minutes, March 29th, 2018.
Would you approve?
Any questions? Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty?
Aye.
Ms. Nahada?
Aye.
Dr. Graham? Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
Under open forums, item 1.6, Mr. Edward De Bru. I know I just butchered your name. Would you please come to the podium, sir? And you signed up for two items, sir? Is that correct? Okay. And if I'm reading this correct, the first one is amending the EPCC parking permit for...
That's one of them, yes, sir.
Okay, I was trying to figure out the abbreviation. Senior adult participants, students. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Which one do you want me to start off first?
Whichever one you're comfortable with, sir.
Okay, we'll start off with amending EPCC parking permit for SAP students.
We'll start off with amending EPC parking permit for SAP students.
Yes, sir.
I send a copy to all the board members and to Ms. Yáñez. And I like to read it aloud and I like to have a follow-up on it. Okay. I propose that SAP students be allowed to get a free parking pass decal for two classes. The amount of hours for one class according to the present class schedule is 24. Each consecutive class is 24 hours. If the SAP student takes two classes, he or she is not eligible to receive a parking pass because he or she is over the 48-hour policy by one hour. The policy should be amended to consider this financial burden on seniors. The cost of a parking sticker decal for SAP students during the semester was $15 and yearly was $25. August 2018, the cost of semester stickers will rise $15 more, which will be a total of $30. The present cost of a year sticker was $25 and it would rise $15 more to $40. Okay. I'll continue on this one. I do not know if the $15 increase is justified, but it would make a burden on SAP students. A gradual increase in cost would be justified. $15 increase is too much for senior citizens to bear. Your financial action will deter SAP students from taking more than one class due to their fixed income. This rising cost will limit seniors to attend classes and visit other facilities on EPCC campus. This is why I propose this compromise for SAP students only. I'm just wanting to follow up on this. I have not heard a reply from Community College since I wrote it in 7/3/2018.
Is that a copy of the letter that you sent?
Yes, and it's right on there. Same copy. And it should be on there.
Just to verify, what do you consider a senior?
Senior is anyone 55 or older. And SAP stands for Senior Adult Program in Continuing Education. So I'm asking a follow-up on this. I know Ms. Yáñez got a letter, she got this letter. And I know the one in charge of continuing education also got this memo.
Would you mind giving your copy to Ms. Payne when you're done? Not right now, sir, when you're done. And then, Dr. Sarata, could you follow up in regards to the parking situation?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Your next item?
Okay. Let's see where I go. Okay. Here, right here is that I'm requesting EPCC to post flyers on all campuses prior to continuing education registration. This will make it easier for SAP and non-SAP students to register online. It will give these students a reason to use EPC computers, computer labs, which is called the ACS. Once a student votes online, they will gain this confidence, and this is a goal of EPCC. This is an example of the flyer that I have made and I passed around. And there's a copy of this PowerPoint presentation, printout, which I given to you. And this will help students to register online. And once they register online, they don't have to go to register on the campuses at 6:00 in the morning, waiting for them to open at 7:30 in the morning. They can use their own computer, or they can go to the lab, which I request because they have technical assistance. So I prepared this PowerPoint presentation, which you have. Ms. Yáñez also has this, and also Mr. Farias, who's in charge of continuing education. This is a great asset, and this would help students in every way. But there's an old saying, "You can take a horse to water, but you can't make him drink." So I asked your assistants to have this posted in all the campuses to try and help the students to get motivated to vote, not to vote, to register for continuous education classes, which begin August 6th. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
First, let me apologize for not getting, you're not getting a response to your first letter. We, well, Dr. Sarata now is going to follow up with you in regards to that. And, Dr. Sarata, would you mind following up with, pronounce your last name for me, please?
De Bru.
De Bru. Would you follow up with Mr. De Bru on the second item also?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention, sir.
And thank you very much. Thank you.
Anyone else here for open forum? Going once, twice? Pamela, please.
Item 1.7, presentations by individuals, groups, and organizations. Item 1.7.1, Dr. William Sarata, college president, will recognize individuals who have retired from the college district.
Ms. Dunn, will you join me at the podium, please? Pardon me, Dr. Dunn. Dr. Dunn is not joining us, but I do want to make, take the opportunity, we do have a plaque for her, so should she show up. Dr. Irene Dunn was a tremendous asset to the nursing program during her 26 years of service to El Paso Community College. She was the first nursing faculty member to develop and deliver hybrid courses, and she spent countless hours revising and improving her courses throughout the years. Dr. Dunn is a lifelong learner and advanced her education while a faculty member, earning an additional master's degree as well as a doctorate. Whether it was taking on new assignments, developing innovative course deliveries, or furthering her education, Dr. Dunn always performed admirably and worked diligently. She will be missed by her colleagues and her students, and we wish her well and thank her for her 26 years of dedicated service to El Paso Community College.
Item 1.7.2, optional presentations will be made by the presidents of the Classified Staff Association, the Professional Staff Association, the Faculty Association, and the Student Government Association. Item 1.8, communications, none. Item 1.9, Board of Trustees Business. Item 1.9.1, the Board of Trustees will deliberate on transferring the scholarship fund raised for Dr. Ernst Roberts' endowment to the EPCC Foundation at the request of Laurel Roberts.
A motion to approve?
Say.
Any questions? Dr. Graham, did you say something?
No, she just didn't finish reading that.
There is one sentence left. "The usage of the funds shall be restricted as directed by the Board of Trustees." Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty?
Aye.
Ms. Nahada?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
Item 1.9.2, the Board of Trustees will hear the appeal presentation of Mr. Victor Bettis.
Mr. Bettis has indicated that he would like to meet with the board in executive.
Are you going into executive?
Yes, please.
"The Board of Trustees may conduct an executive or closed session pursuant to Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code for one or more of the following reasons. One, consultation with its attorney to seek or receive legal advice or consultation regarding pending or contemplated litigation or for any purpose authorized by law. Two, discussion about the value or transfer of real property. Three, discussion about a prospective gift or donation. Four, consideration of specific personnel matters. Five, discussion about security, personnel, or devices. Or six, discussion of certain economic development matters. The Board may also announce that it will go into executive session on any item listed on this agenda if the subject matter is permitted for a closed session by provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. Any vote regarding these items shall be taken in open session." The time is 6:46 PM. Board of Trustees are reconvened in regular session.
Can you read item 1.9.2?
Item 1.9.2, the Board of Trustees will hear the appeal presentation of Mr. Victor Bettis.
Any motions?
So move.
Okay. We have no motion? Well, there's no second. So motion dies. We have no motion, so we, the board will take no action, 1.9.2. Presence report.
Item 1.10, Board Reports. Item 1.10.1, Treasuries Report, June 30th, 2018, no action is necessary. Item 1.10.2, President's Report. Item 1.10.2.1, Dr. Sarata will update the Board of Trustees and audience on recent events that have transpired at the college.
Chair Fiero, member of the Board. More than 100 students, faculty, staff, and community members commemorated the groundbreaking for the Mission del Paso campus on July 25th. Kudos to Carrie Moe and her team for setting up the event. At that event, we were able to hear from EPCC alum Leo Gamboa, who shared how EPCC made a difference in his life. I'd like to share a brief quote from his remarks. He said, "Fresh out of high school, I knew very little about college. It simply wasn't part of the conversation in my everyday world. However, EPCC showed me the world of higher education, thanks to the faculty and staff who do what they loved and loved what they did. Instructors helped me, tutors ensured that my challenges weren't handicaps, but opportunities for success. I flourished at EPCC." Leo is just one example of why EPCC is the best place to start and finish. The projects we are embarking on as part of EPCC's master plan construction will continue to transform students' lives and increase educational attainment in our region. That was the fifth of six groundbreaking ceremonies. Our last groundbreaking ceremony will be held August 30th at the Northwest Campus. On July 12th, 2018, I was honored to present at the Region 19 Annual Educators Conference, Culture, Caring, and the Classroom. Over 1,500 participants attended the event at the Plaza Theater. Many thanks to Dr. Gied and his team. Mrs. Barbara Amaya, wife of our very own Dr. Amaya, coordinated the event and was very kind to ask me to speak at the event. I attended, on July 18th, a roundtable conversation on the National Workforce hosted by the Kresge Foundation. A Prudential Mind Math in New Directions Camp sponsored by the Prudential Foundation was held on July 16th through the 20th for students ages 10 through 18. The purpose of the camp was to engage the students and get them interested in careers that use math and technology. They participated in a variety of mathematical and team-building games and activities and heard from speakers in math and technology professions. Students planned and designed a tiny house and its prototype to scale with recyclable materials and electronic building blocks. Students also visited UTEP to learn the basics of coding. This week-long event was made possible with a lot of planning and coordination by several EPCC faculty and staff. Special thanks to Ms. Margie Nelson Rodriguez and to Ms. Van Chen, camp coordinators. Courtney Kessler, Administrative Assistant; Dr. Becky Escamilla, faculty volunteer; Ms. Debbie Aguilera, STS manager; and all the STS students who served as guides. And thank you to Dean Rick Webb for your contribution to another successful camp. Culinary Arts Program held a boot camp on July 12th, which hosted over 150 students from local high schools and new graduates. The camp included tours of the culinary arts facilities and various classes, including advanced pastry, food service management in restaurant, and a demo on omelets. Thank you to Chef Daniel Guerra, the culinary arts instructor and staff, and Dean Rick Webb for your efforts to increase enrollment and showcase your program. EPCC's Institute of Executive Resort Services, TIRs, held a night on the bayou on Thursday, July 26th. The fundraiser promotes the TIRs program and provides student scholarship. The event was hosted by Linda Cropper, Travel and Tourism and Hospitality Operations Coordinator, and Chef Daniel Guerra, Culinary Arts Coordinator. Sanjo Rosales, Cosmetology Program Coordinator, and Tammy Taggart, Massage Therapy Coordinator, co-hosted a table and also participated in the event. Again, thank you, Dean Rick Webb, for your continued recruitment efforts. Fort Bliss soldiers are completing a nine-month paramedic course at the Mission del Paso Campus. The Army requires flight medics to be paramedics. Having this class offered at EPCC is helpful so that soldiers don't have to travel to take the course at their joint base in San Antonio, Texas. Master Sergeant Melvin Milton, a medic and organizer of the program, said this course not only enhances their medical skills, but also helps build the partnership between EPCC and Fort Bliss. Class enjoyed the ride-alongs with the El Paso Fire Department, Judge Hagerty, and opportunities to learn at Del Sol Medical Center and El Paso Children's Hospital. Thank you to Tim Grover, paramedic instructor and retired Army medic, and to Dr. Paula Mitchell, the Rio Grande Campus Dean, for the work that you do and the many opportunities you provide to our military community. And finally, the Cosmetology Program hosted the third event for the Fatherhood Effects Program and the Child Crisis Center on July 14th. The focus of the event is for fathers to spend time with their daughters and to teach dads to give their daughters a simple hairstyle as they get ready for school. Chair Fiero?
I should have.
Thank you to Sanjo Rosales, Cosmetology Program Coordinator, to the faculty, Cecilia Dominguez, and Josephine Cruz, and again, Dean Rick Webb for hosting this great community event. And that concludes my report, Chair.
Thank you very much, Dr. Sarata.
Mr. Fiero?
Yes, Dr. Graham?
If I can add a little bit to the report that Dr. Sarata provided, I wanted to share with you that I had a parent that came in today to speak about the presentation that Dr. Sarata had at the Region 19. I think it was called Culture of Giving?
Yeah, Culture, Caring, and the Classroom.
And the reason she came looking for me was because she is asking that we consider placing on the website the PowerPoint that Dr. Sarata presented. And she's also speaking about how impressed she was as a parent and how she feels that every parent should know that information. And her suggestion, which I think it's a good one, was that especially all our students that are coming to EPCC via the early college high schools should receive that kind of information and that the college should make it mandatory that anyone that comes to orientation should be exposed to that information. She was very pleasantly surprised to learn everything that he was sharing. I don't know what he shared, but that's what she said. Secondly, on the TIRs program that was held Thursday, it was an absolutely amazing opportunity that I wish all of us had been there. Raymond and I went, and it was, it had like a New Orleans theme, gambling and stuff like that, but, you know, within the dinner event. And the food was really different. It was very outstanding. So if we have it again, I would encourage that we all should be there at that event.
Thank you, Dr. Graham. Dr. Sarata, would you share the PowerPoint that Dr. Graham's referring to with the board?
Absolutely. We'll send it to the board members.
Item 1.11, Consent Docket, that includes item 3.2.
Move to approve?
Second.
Questions? Pam?
Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty?
Aye.
Ms. Nahada?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
Item 2.0, Administration, None. Item 3.1, Full-Time Institutionally Funded Actions.
Would you approve?
Second.
Questions? Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty?
Aye.
Ms. Nahada?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
Item 3.3, Consideration and Deliberation on the Salary Increases for College Employees for the 2018-19 Fiscal Year.
Move to approve?
Second.
Questions? Pam, we're ready?
Ms. Shaughnessy's trying to say something.
No, no. That's better.
There's a reason he cut you off.
I guess he didn't want to hear the percentage that we are recommending.
Oh.
So we're recommending 3% across the board for all employees.
And that's the highest we can go.
Excuse me?
And that's the highest we can go on the budgets.
That is what we are recommending, based on the budget that we have. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is that your motion, Dr. Graham?
Yes, sir. That's my motion. 3%.
Any questions? Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty?
Aye.
Ms. Nahada?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
On behalf of the faculty and staff, let me thank the board for the action. Thank you all.
Item 3.4, Information Items, No Action Is Required. Item 4.1, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of Contracts with Several Purchasing Cooperative Awarded Vendors for the Districtwide Purchase of Office Products in an Estimated Annual Aggregate Amount Not to Exceed $850,000.
Move to approve 4.1 and 4.2.
Second.
Any questions? Item 4.2, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of a Contract Award to USI Southwest Incorporated for Commercial Property Educators Legal Liability Automobile Crime and General Law Enforcement Cybersecurity and School Crisis Liability Insurance in an Amount Not to Exceed $564,268.
Any questions? No? Pam, we're ready?
Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty?
Aye.
Ms. Nahada?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
Item 4.3, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of Contract Awards for Catering Services for Large Districtwide Events in an Estimated Annual Aggregate Amount Not to Exceed $200,000.
Move to approve?
Second.
Questions? Pam, we're ready?
Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty?
Aye.
Ms. Nahada?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
Item 4.4, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval to Award Contracts for Advertising to Various Radio Stations for Fiscal Year 2018-19 in an Annual Aggregate Amount Not to Exceed $200,000.
Move to approve?
Second.
Ms. Moe? Item 4.4, then we have 4.6, 4.7, 4.8. Could you, through Dr. Sarata, put a presentation together on how those dollars are being spent or invested? Thank you. Well, I know, I'll forget when we get there. Thank you, Judge.
Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty?
Aye.
Ms. Nahada?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
No.
Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
Item 4.5, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval to Renew the Microsoft Campus Agreement for Microsoft Academic Licensing from SHI Government Solutions Incorporated in the Amount of $199,531.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any questions? Pam, we're ready?
Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty?
Aye.
Ms. Nahada?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
Item 4.6, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval to Award Contracts for Advertising to Various TV Stations for Fiscal Year 2018-19 in an Annual Aggregate Amount Not to Exceed $180,000.
Motion to approve, item 4.6, 4.7, 4.8?
Second.
Item 4.7, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of Expenditures for Districtwide Advertising Services with Several Publication Vendors for Fiscal Year 2018-19 in an Annual Aggregate Amount Not to Exceed $150,000. And item 4.8, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval to Award a Contract for Outdoor Advertising for Fiscal Year 2018-19 in an Annual Aggregate Amount Not to Exceed $100,000.
Any questions? Pam, we're ready?
Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty?
Aye.
Ms. Nahada?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
No.
Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
Item 4.9, Consideration- Item 4.9, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of a Contract Extension with People Admin Incorporated to Continue to Provide an Online Recruitment, Applicant Tracking, and Performance Management Web-Based Software Solution in the Amount of $92,446.
Move to approve?
Second.
Dr. Sarata, could you ask Dr. Peña to give us a, a report on whether the issues that the board had brought up in the past have improved with this, you know, since, you don't have to do it right now. You can, Dr. Sarata?
We will. We'll bring forward a follow-up on the concerns that the board raised and this new software and its ability to mitigate those concerns.
Thank you. Any other questions? Pam, we're ready?
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahada.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fiero.
Aye.
Item 5.1, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval to Award a Contract to Medlock Commercial Contractors LLC for the Art Studio and Science Learning Area Renovation at the Trans Mountain Campus in an Amount Not to Exceed $1,131,185.
Move to approve?
Any questions? Pam, we're ready?
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahada.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fiero.
Aye.
Item 6.1, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of Contract Renewals for Access to Online Databases for the EPCC Libraries in an Annual Aggregate Amount Not to Exceed $178,600.
Move to approve 6.1 and 6.2.
Second.
Item 6.2, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of a New Contract with Gobi Library Solutions from EBSCO to Purchase Books and Digital Material in an Amount Not to Exceed $149,387.
Move to approve?
Any questions? Did you read 6? Yeah? We're ready, Pam?
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahada.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fiero.
Aye.
Item 6.3, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval to Purchase a Thermo Fisher Scientific ISQ 7000 GCMS System from Fisher Scientific Company LLC in the Amount of $75,005.
Move to approve?
6.3 and 6.4.
I just have a question. What is it?
Can you read 6.4, please?
I know we have that description. I still don't know what it is.
Item 6.4, Consideration and Deliberation on the Acceptance of the High School Equivalency Grant Award from the U.S. Department of Education in the Amount of $475,000.
Dean Webb, are you going to tell us what 6.3 is?
Dr. Graham, here comes your answer.
Welcome, Dean Webb.
It's the right answer, but I'll try to do my best. We're going to be utilizing this particular piece of equipment to do different analysis of all the, thank you, of all the different cures researched in relation to the RISE grant. So apparently, this piece of equipment is able to identify different densities and other substances, so I'm not a scientist.
If you don't know the answer, you gave a good one.
I'll do the best that I can, so.
But is, is this something that we're putting in every campus? Or is this unique to one area?
We're going to be utilizing it for the RISE grant, so it'll be predominantly at the TM campus. However, the different students from different campuses can come and utilize that piece of equipment there as well. So in support not only of the TM campus, but also our T-Mex students.
Okay, I guess also my concern was that it's a sole source provider. Did we really do research to make sure that there was not another entity that?
We did work with purchasing to go through that specific set of circumstances and were advised that the sole source was the best route to go forward.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, any question, other questions? No?
No.
6.4, no?
The funding is provided by the grants.
Pam, we're ready?
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahada.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fiero.
Aye.
Item 6.5, Consideration and Deliberation on the Acceptance of a Grant Award from the U.S. Department of Education College Assistance migrant program camp to the El Paso Community College Education Program in the Amount of $267,516.
Move to approve 6.5 and 6.6.
Second.
Any questions?
Want me to read 6.6?
Oh, thank you, ma'am.
Item 6.6, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of the Amended and Restated Cotton Valley Early College High School Interlocal Agreement.
Questions? Done? Pam?
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahada.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fiero.
Aye.
Item 6.7, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of the Amended and Restated Mission Early College High School Interlocal Agreement.
Move to approve 6.7 and 6.8.
Second.
Item 6.8, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of the Amended and Restated Socorro Early College High School Interlocal Agreement.
Questions? Pam?
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahada.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fiero.
Aye.
Item 7.1, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of a Contract Award with the College Board to Support Required Academic Assessment Testing of Students in an Amount Not to Exceed $120,000.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any questions? Pam?
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahada.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fiero.
Aye.
Item 7.2, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of Lease Contracts with the Phoenix of El Paso for Rental of Apartments for the Intercollegiate Athletics Department in an Amount Not to Exceed $70,000.
Move to approve?
Second.
Dr. Graham, you don't have a question for Dr. Gonzalez?
I thought that maybe Judge Hagerty would, would figure out how often we have bought these apartments.
At least four times.
Pam, we're ready?
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
I guess.
Ms. Nahada.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
I guess.
That's not one of the options, I don't think. Mr. Fiero.
Aye.
Pam, would you please note that before we adjourn that our next board meeting will be August 23?
Were you still going to have?
I'm sorry?
Were you still going to have an executive for that update you asked about?
Yes. Well, no. We're, motion adjourned.
Your motion?
Yep. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.